Good morning, everyone.
We all good, Kate? We're good?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first ordinary council meeting of the term. Please join me in standing for the opening carakia. I have no apologies for the day. If there's any one has any declarations of interest to declare today, but if you come up with some as we're progressing through, please let the secretariat know. Okay, so we'll go straight into public forum. We have Scott Buxton, who is here to speak about the direction of the city and consulting residents before changes are made. Welcome.
So, I've been living in the city now again for eighteen months and we live on Milton Street. So my concerns are around the buses, where the residents are supposed to park, and also the new pedestrian crossing that's been put on down by Symeon Street. We have a bus stop right outside, not directly outside, but beside our house. And in the last probably four days at least, I have seen the buses not actually using the bus stop. They can't get into the bus stop and they're either holding up the live lane of traffic or they are just pulling in where they can to drop people off and pick people up. There's now five bus stops in a 500 metre area. There's a brand-new bus stop that was put in without public consultation or being talked to, straight across the street from us. In the house, out where the bus stop is, there's now a group of five people or four people own that house and there's like seven vehicles that need to park. Plus, yeah, with all the other multi-houses or units that are going in around the place, there's less and less parking, as well as all the cycle lanes and stuff like that that are in the area as well. The safety issue around the pedestrian crossing is I'm seeing people not actually using the pedestrian crossing, as well as they have to cross the street three times to get, if they do use the pedestrian crossing, they have to cross the street three times to get to the other side of the street directly from where they were. And it's holding up the emergency services. I've seen myself, fire trucks, ambulance and police stopped because of the traffic build-up, because of the traffic lights. Yes, apparently there's sensors to go in that haven't been put in yet, but listening to the radio and it was John McDonald Morning Show that I know you, Mr Muir, go on frequently. He spoke to the police commissioner and the police commissioner admitted around Christchurch, the police themselves do not go down any streets with speed humps or these pedestrian crossings and if they can avoid it. In my case, we had an ambulance come to our house, just seven months ago, from my wife. The ambulance couldn't actually even park outside their own house. So, yeah, with the bus stops and just its safety, plus like I'm struggling to get in and out of my driveway because there's nowhere, or I have to cross the live lane into the other lane to even turn towards Barrington Mall. So, yeah, my concern is we've been not consulted as public people. We want a bus stop moved five or six metres either way to be able to let the buses have a driveway at either end rather than cover half a driveway and then a residence and then another half a driveway. Yeah, as well as, as I say, the speed humps and unnecessary high-fuel pedestrian crossing at the end of Symeon Street is holding up traffic, causing traffic issues in the area and also stopping emergency services. So, as I say, without public consultation, nobody came and knocked down our door about the bus stop across the street or our neighbour. Our neighbour is living in a new unit that they built and, yeah, he's got safety problems with it as well. It's also affecting his parking as well as any visitor parking that comes to our place.
Thank you. Are you done?
Yep.
It surprises, disappoints me that a bus can't come and get into a bus stop, so we'd need to go down and have a look at that. Kelly, you got a question?
Yeah, thanks for that. Thanks for detailing your observations. So, just to be clear, what you're asking for is the removal of a bus stop?
So, there's a bus stop, as I say, directly outside, that's directly outside our neighbour's house, but the lead-in is outside our place.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to...
There's a brand-new bus stop being put in across the street without any consultation, which, there's a bus stop which it's supposed to replace a bus stop that's 100 metres around the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like what we want to happen is the bus stop that's affecting us move five or eight metres either way, so that it has, the buses have that lead-in and it doesn't block any driveways.
Okay, so that's the one thing that you're here to ask us to do?
Well, yeah, just in general. I mean, you know, like my safety concerns for the whole of Milton Street between Selwyn and Symeon Street. With the new lights in place, there's a massive build-up of traffic and it's causing buses to have problems.
Yeah, so I guess it's just the solutions I'm after.
Jake, please.
Thanks, Scott. No, I was just going to suggest, have you thought of going to your local community board as well? They're going to be able to work quite closely with you on it.
Yeah, so if the community board had actually come and knocked on the door, we would have said, well, we want this move to hear or, you know, they could have come and consulted with us about the new bus stop that was put in. It wasn't there one day. I backed down my driveway across the street to get our other car out of the road, out of our driveway, and it was there.
Sure. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm going to the community board next.
Absolutely. Now, we are out of time, but Yani had his hand up and it's...
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, did you get a start-work notice to tell you that the work was started?
No, no, we got notices about the work that was happening along Milton Street from Isaacs, but we never got any notification around that there was a new bus stop or anything like that being put in. The reason that we've got a problem with what's happening with the bus stop outside our place is the existing house that was there before we moved in was demolished and it was an empty section. When they built the new houses on that empty section, they switched the driveway from one side to the other, so there was a double drive. And now the bus stop and our neighbour, which he's concerned, as I say, he's concerned about the bus stop and the access to where he parks, his car and anybody in the house that parks there semi-blocks our driveway, plus he's right hard against the end of the bus stop. So, I mean, as I say, by moving the bus stop either back or forward to over, like within the next residence or over, completely over his residence, it gives the driveways a lead-in and a lead-out.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for bringing that to our attention. What street number roughly should I go out to on Milton Street?
So, we live at 100 Milton Street. The bus stop is, like the lead-in for the bus stop is outside our house in number 98.
98.
But then there's a brand-new bus stop, as I say, directly across the street from us at number, I think it's, yeah, whatever. It's directly across the road from us.
I'll drive past, have a look on the way home. Thank you for the time coming in. Oh, no, it's easy, sometimes it's easier to see it than it is to hear it. Okay, right. We have no deputations or petitions today, so we'll now move on to item five. Welcome Caroline, Jamie and Gill to the table for VO's annual report.
All right, yeah. Or do they? No, it's just, it's just list, yes.
Good. Kierakoto to you and to councillors, and particularly to the new councillors, David and Nathaniel. Look, today, we're going to take the opportunity, I'm standing because I'm going to be here for 30 seconds and then I've got to sit at the back. We're going to take the opportunity to talk about three things. The annual report, briefly, because it's an historical document and you haven't got it. The first quarter performance of the current financial year we're in, which will be quite brief, just to update you and let you know how we're going. And then probably Caroline will spend a fair bit of time talking about the big exciting thing to come, One New Zealand Stadium at Te Ka Ha and an update on that. Caroline will do most of the presentation. Jamie will take questions on particularly around the financials and I'll be at the back and I'll only jump to my feet if it's something I don't like.
So we won't see you again.
Hopefully not.
Good on you, mate. Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And just to reiterate Gill's words, welcome and nice to see you, David and Nathaniel. And pretty privileged to be the first of your official meetings post-election, so nice to see you all. So we'll kick it off and move through as quickly as we can. There's a little bit to cover, so while Stevie 2425 feels like a wee while ago now, we'll reflect on the performance of venues Oorto Tahi for that financial year, cover off a little bit about Q1, which is already in our midst, and then look forward to a couple of particular announcements around One New Zealand Stadium at Te Ka Ha. So you've seen our annual report. It was a great year financially and operationally and we're really proud of that because it was despite challenge. Obviously, costs continue to rise, but seeing the demand for the community venues is really heartening, so not just from an attendance perspective but from a venue hire perspective. So we saw more events, we saw more people and we saw a higher revenue events also. So a few highlights, obviously, supporting local and contributing positively to the social, cultural, environmental and economic fabric of the region remains core to what we do. So, and our results underpin that principle. You'll see a close to 720,000 guests through the venues in the financial year. Our target was 500,000, so a great result there. We did 408 events and we contributed about 195,000 in community discount to those individuals and groups that want to use the facilities that perhaps couldn't otherwise do so. We're also really proud to see that that 42 million, close enough to it, in direct and direct economic contribution to the region. That comes through visitation, so coming to events at the venues, as well as through local procurement of food and beverage, as well as the engagement of local suppliers and contractors. So, great to see. Stats are all good, but it's really nice to hear some of the stories when you think about community and the community use of the venues. A couple of examples, the special children's Christmas party that we've supported for over a decade now. They wouldn't otherwise be able to find a venue as big enough to provide those opportunities for those kids with financial hardship, with challenges in their lives, with special needs, to have a safe environment to celebrate Christmas together. So we really love supporting that event and it's a wonderful story to hear. The Kapahaka, the Tu Hono Kapahaka festival that we have at the Christchurch Town Hall, that was essentially a cultural festival that was disbanded years ago. And so our ability to support that, and they now do that twice a year, and have now also expanded that through to Auckland. So really wonderful stories about the community venues we're so proud and privileged to be able to manage on behalf of the city. Sorry, I'll go back. And just local procurement, so obviously we continue to source around 80% of our food locally. And what that does is create a genuine ecosystem. Obviously, we have volume, so we can procure a lot of produce from the region and it means that our guests can enjoy the wonderful thing about Canterbury, which is our wonderful produce. But to give you a couple of examples, so all of our beef, our chicken, our pork, excuse me, comes from, and our lamb comes from Peter Timbs in Edgware. And they didn't used to procure all of their meats locally, but they do now. And so you'll see our chicken comes from Whedon's Farm, our beef comes from Melbourne and lamb, and our free-range pork comes from Cheviot at Harris Farms. So again, you're creating this wonderful ecosystem through our principle and commitment to supporting local, which is awesome. Event highlights, again, it seems like quite a wee while ago that we were looking at hosting all these events, but look, many of you would have enjoyed and seen the events and the venues, but you'll see a wonderful utilisation across the venue portfolio. And a particular highlight, excuse me, is the 268 events that we held at the Christchurch Town Hall. We'll talk a little bit about Q1, but essentially it's averaging in the first quarter of the year around that 90-95% occupancy, which is such a testament to that wonderful, wonderful venue and the use of it. And you'll see again, all of the other venues are getting great usage and a lot of those event numbers, they're multi-day, thank you, multi-day, so you are seeing. Oh, lovely, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, obviously a few highlights in there. Wonderful international cricket at the Oval, sold-out shows at Wolfbrook Arena, and again, great to see the Crusaders take home the title at Apollo Projects Stadium. The venue we will miss. All right, we'll move on to social impact. Obviously, environmental and social impact is a core strategic principle and priority for venues Oorto Tahi. A couple of highlights there, we have some strong charity partnerships. Wonderful to see the Full Bellies Virtual Stadium event announced not so long ago. If anybody hasn't bought a ticket yet, please do, it's a wonderful cause. Our Maya partnership, the Rescue Chopper partnership are all well in train. And again, you're seeing all of those staff numbers of local staff employed and good to see our staff engagement at 86% as well as our low turnover, which is about 14% better than you'll see across industry, which is awesome. Everyone's really committed to what venues Oorto Tahi do and contribute on behalf of the city. And environmentally, we've got some highlights, albeit this is still a work in progress and will always be so. We've got some material reductions across electricity, stationary fuels and transport fuels, and we will see more material decreases in the future. Transport, we have changed all of our cars and vans to electric or hybrid and our forklifts, so that's what's contributed, that 44% reduction there. Our stationary fuels, that reduction comes from closer management and scrutiny of our diesel boilers at the arena particularly, and they will be replaced in the summer of '26-'27, which will reduce materially our carbon footprint. They contribute about 30% of our carbon footprint at the moment. And our electricity usage has been reduced through replacing all of our fluorescent lights at Wolfbrook Arena and our sports lights to LED, so obviously they're more energy efficient as well as not needing to be replaced so often. And financially, again, a strong performance despite the challenges of the economic climate and some volatility, particularly around food costs, repairs and maintenance costs and labour costs, but great to see that positive variance there through... But great to see that positive variance there through in revenue, close to three million, positive variance against budget. That comes from event volumes, types of events and commercial partnerships that we've engaged in over the course of the last, that twelve-month period. But the stringent cost control contributing to a positive variance against our operating expenses. So with net operating overheads and fixed costs, you'll see a positive variance there of a million dollars. So all of those things add up to a close to, well, just over, sorry, three million dollars positive variance on EBITDA. So again, we're getting the balance right when it comes to driving revenue growth as well as maintaining control of cost. So into Q1, continuing the momentum really. We've had a great start to the year so far, and both financially and operationally. And whilst One New Zealand Stadium at Takaha isn't too far away, it does actually only contribute ten weeks of operation to this financial year. So we've got to remember that we've got five wonderful venues that we're filling up and we're busy. So again, that kind of ninety-five percent average across the first quarter essentially for the town hall is wonderful to see. So a few highlights there, a hundred and eighty thousand guests or so already through the venues in the first three months, a hundred and twenty-nine events, which is again another positive variance to budget, and good to see that balance and diversity of content throughout the venues as well. We continue to maintain our momentum around celebrating and sourcing local. We'll never waver from that, and we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to even strengthen that in the coming while with our announcement today. Some of you may have already seen it, timing might have been smidgen off. And then into our economic impact already for the, for the quarter, so, oh, that's good if you haven't. For the quarter, so just over eleven point five million already in positive economic impact for the region through visitation, local procurement, and our commitment to local contractors and suppliers. Not to be repetitive, but again, maintaining good momentum around community events, so both from a discounted value perspective as well as the number of events themselves. And financially, again, we are tracking, we are tracking well. So in the first three months of the year, we already have a over seven hundred thousand dollar positive variance to budget from an event income perspective. And again, you're seeing those controls around costs, et cetera, being reflected in our budget. So we have a positive variance to EBITDA of close to a million dollars in the first three months of the year. So a good start and well positioned for a good next few years. All right, so looking at One New Zealand Stadium at Takaha, we've always wanted to commit to giving you as many updates as we can, so attaching those to our quarterly updates. And much of which you'll start abreast of anyway. But just to talk through a little bit of some of the, whoa, the milestones already in the last couple of months, as well as those coming up. So obviously, the intensity of work around operational readiness is certainly intensifying. And whilst we are very busy in a business-as-usual sense, we are certainly peaking, which is, which is great, but a lot to do. Awesome to see Super Round announced and on sale with ticket sales strong, and that really does just showcase the demand for the venue. Everyone's waited a long time for this awesome stadium to be upon us. The majority of our material, commercial transactions are complete, so our focus really is around event attraction, as well as the remaining inventory for premium hospitality. But we are already ahead of where we thought we would be when it comes to premium hospitality sales, which is a positive. We've recently established a commercial forum, so essentially this is a forum of central city business, hospitality providers, accommodation providers, retailers, a forum to leverage the opportunity that is the stadium. And so that will not only be a communications forum, as well as sharing challenges. There's a lot of new activity in this part of the city, so we want to be able to share in addressing those challenges and working with all of those local businesses to navigate that. We will also establish a community forum. Again, a lot of residents in this part of town that haven't necessarily had this amount of activity and this type of activity. So again, not only the opportunity, but the challenge, and we want to do that together. So in the, in the coming months, obviously, we'll continue to focus on our operational readiness, and you'll start seeing a few more event announcements coming in November and December and January, traversing both entertainment and sport. And we are already taking a number of bookings for business events, the business events programme will be strong. But one thing we wanted to talk to you about today is an announcement that, that is out today, around the Otoatahi Retail Food Collective. So we wanted to do something different, and we wanted to really underpin and strengthen our support for local. And we wanted to do something that no other stadium in New Zealand was doing. We're going to have the best stadium in this country by a country mile. But there's even more we can do, the venue is just the platform. And we want to make sure that we leverage this opportunity to deliver economic benefit for the city and that the stadium itself is a destination for food, not just for events. So we've been through a process to seek, an RFP process to seek expressions of interest to be part of the journey from local businesses, local retail operators. And we've now concluded there and announced there. So we just wanted to talk you through what the Retail Food Collective looks like. So that is a little bit small, but there are a number of retail outlets across One New Zealand Stadium at Takaha. And we now have, and I'm just going to run through them. So Corian Fried Chicken, Coria House is a, is a restaurant in Ricketton. Bacon Brothers Burgers, again, you all know the number of Bacon Brothers Burgers places in Christchurch. Black Burger also in the city, Arbor Wood Fired Pizza, which is out in Littleton. Little Fish Company in Riverside, Fush, which you'll know from their mobile operations, as well as the airport, and Wickram. Smokey Tees, which is in Riverside also. Papa's Hot Dogs, which is Papa Smashies, they're in Sidnum. And Pedro's, which is obviously, we all know and love Pedro's from being, if anybody's been from Christchurch for any period of time. So you'll see there, and we'll go to the next slide, so you've got. Oh, Sheffield Pies, sorry. God, I missed it. Sheffield Pies, yeah, of, of the two locations outside of Sheffield, that you'll be able to get Sheffield Pies, one being Oxford, and now one being One New Zealand Stadium. Very, very excited, a very excited child about that, actually. And so you'll see most of them here on Level One concourse. Some of them have one outlet, some have a couple. But we love the concept, we love how different it is, and we love the platform that it's providing for local business. So we hope you all share in, in that excitement. I think we all need to do a food crawl at some point to enjoy the offerings. And then up on Level Three, which is the premium GA level. Colab is the one that venues Otoatahi will do in partnership with local eateries, but that one will rotate just to give an opportunity to showcase different local eateries on Level Three. And Fush there is the other up, up there. Venues Otoatahi will run all the bars, so we'll retain all of the bars, but again, through our predominantly local beverage providers. And that is the end of our presentation, so yeah, open for questions, thank you.
Yes, we've got Tyler, if you end up pulling in.
Hey Caroline, I just have a left-field question.
Oh, I love this.
Have you or the team ever explored static or digital marketing around each of your venues to provide advertising opportunities and income?
Yep, yep, so a few years ago, we invested in quite a significant volume of technology at Wolfbrook Arena to provide that marketing platform. The concept was around essentially what a lot of international venues do, but they generally have a lot more footfall outside of just event day. And so that advertising platform didn't work quite so well from a regular, but we do upsell when it comes to, for the likes of Expose, et cetera, who can buy the opportunity to, to market or for their sponsors, et cetera. The stadium has three hundred digital screens, dual-level LED, so we will be selling advertising, but most of it is sold by the venue hireer, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Pauline, please.
Yes, thanks, it's so exciting, really, really good. With all the amazing food offerings, and I see that you've got in your report that you've actually established a dedicated executive resource to develop education and engagement around waste. So are you also demanding of the suppliers that they actually have really good packaging that's, that's not so much plastic and stuff like that?
Yeah, absolutely, so there's, there's three core, it might be three or four, core criteria. So one is sourcing local, one is meeting environmental standard around packaging, and the other is obviously quality and safety of food and the ability to deliver that at volume. So we've got those core criteria, we don't want to deviate at all from those commitments we've made around environmental and local, so yeah. That's all reflected in those contracts.
Because we still see a lot of food takeaway outlets that they could use cardboard and they're still using plastic. And so, I mean, this would be a great platform to actually educate people about packaging as well, the consumer and the producer.
Yeah, definitely, and we've actually specified the exact packaging as well, so.
Oh, great, cheers.
Excellent, thank you, and Nathaniel, please.
Yeah, first of all, I think that the food approach is so awesome, it's fantastic. Not just, like going to a stadium and not just getting like a corn dog and soggy chips, but having a wide variety of options, it's fantastic. This isn't my real question, but the ice cream, what's the ice cream supplier, is that confirmed yet?
We're, we're just, we're working through that.
Great.
Yeah, we're working through that. Ice cream and bakery are the two, thanks.
Great, fantastic. My actual question was around the living wage. I just wanted to see, can you confirm that currently and into the future, all employees from First Aid working, whether contracted or directly employed, will be paid the living wage?
Yeah, we can confirm that.
Fantastic, thank you.
And Tyron.
Brilliant, it's all looking great. So nothing against Sheffield Pies, I'm very familiar with their product, as, as my colleague Aaron is, he probably more so than I, but the, could we really not find a purveyor of delicious pies within the bounds of the Territorial Authority of Christchurch? And we had to search out in the Selwyn District? Oh, brother.
We, Sheffield Pies is a Canterbury store, and we love the concept. So as I say, we put out an expressions of interest process, and Sheffield Pies were the ones that, that came to the, to the top, so.
Yeah, it's a good choice, iconic choice.
Okay, that's good, so that's, thank you Caroline, that's really good. And you didn't have to drag Gil up because he didn't hear anything bang. Oh, sorry, Yanni, Yanni's got a question.
Yeah, I will actually, thanks Kelly, I will, yeah, thank you, thank you for the work that you've done. So I just had two quick questions, and I too just wanted to commend you for that use of local produce and also those local operators. That's really cool, really, really happy to hear that. Just in terms of the report, so looking forward, there's no mention of what happens with the Apollo Stadium. Can you give us any understanding of what's happening in terms of that for the future?
Really a question, it's for council.
It comes back to us, they don't, they say us.
Okay, cool. And then the second question was, it's great to get the overall picture of the success of the different things that you're doing, but, and this isn't a new question, it's a question I ask just about every year. Are we able to look at a venue-by-venue assessment of how the venues are performing?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I guess.
Excuse me one minute, would that be a shed load of work with no particular outcome?
No, but what it does do is, the benefit of venues Otoatahi is running these venues as a portfolio, and so all of our shared overhead are shared genuinely. So it's quite tricky to apportion cost per venue, so you're really not going to get the right information.
I think for some of us, given some, and it is going back a few years, where we've seen some venues have chronically under, were chronically underperforming, and it came to a crisis where we had to intervene as a council. So that's why I'm, I'm really keen to understand the sort of trends at each venue, just to have reassurance that things are going in the right way. So we had the temporary stadium and the.
Is it something you could discuss with your board and your board could decide how you wish to give some information on?
Yeah, yes, why don't we do that and we'll come back, because I know it's been something. One thing I would note though is going forward, we will report on One New Zealand Stadium at Takaha separately for, for a good period of time, so you get a good line of sight on the performance of that venue particularly.
That's excellent, okay, so.
Just, how did, Jamie, how did you go in Canada, no beer trips or anything?
No, no beers at all, we came out in the world, it was good.
Very good, thank you Caroline, Jamie and Gil. I'm, I'm happy to move this and Victoria's happy to second it. Now, we're going to have, we play around with our, our new Nintendo. So bear with everyone out there in TV land, we've got a new, new toy to play with, which is how we vote. So in a minute, that'll come up on your screens. And don't forget, we've got two that are banned, yeah, okay. So go ahead and vote now, please. You can do it on your watch? You just tell me when you've got them all, can you? Melanie, Melanie, you. Okay. Everyone's voted, yep, so thank you, everyone's voted, that's closed, so there, we have it, look at that, marvellous. Righto, that's excellent. So now we'll move on to number six, appointment of councillors to council control boards, process and timing. And there is an amendment, I'm happy to move it, and I'm pretty sure Pauline's happy to second it. There is an amendment that's been added into this substantive, so if anyone wants just to read that and make sure they're all happy with it. A couple of minutes just to read it. On your screen. Do you want to explain that a bit?
Just to, just to explain and B can talk about it more, but you'll be aware that there's three different processes covered in this paper. One is the process for appointments to CCHL. Second is the process that's about the appointments to the companies, the three companies, Christchurch, Z, the and VO, and the football. And then the third one is the appointments to what are called council organisations, which we discussed about.
There's about twenty-odd of those.
B can potentially go into detail about the policy around, around those, but we're just splitting those three, and there was some debate in the briefing around who would comprise the panel. This is the advice around who would be on, be on those panels. I won't go into detail because you can ask B any questions, so that's a summary of it.
So is there any questions of that year, David?
Is it intended that the decisions of the appointments panel are unanimous?
Through you, your worship, how the appointments, I'd look for legal advice, but I would think how the appointments panel determines how it will present its recommendations back is not detailed in the policy and would be a matter for them. What we would be looking for is recommendations from the appointments panel to come back to council, but how that's worked out is really, I think, a matter for the appointments panel. This is the process about how these panels will be set up and, and the, in order to make the, in order to determine who will be. and, uh, uh, and the, in order to make the, uh, in order to determine who will be appointed. It would be usual though that those would be, um, uh, by consensus. But if the panel can't make a decision or a recommendation, I think it would have to come back and advise.
So is a short answer that it's not prescriptive?
Apart from the CCHL, apart from the CCHL ones, isn't it?
Yeah, CCHL is a totally different.
Yeah, so this is the actual panel you're talking about.
Sorry, uh, it is, yes, it's recommended. In terms of Christchurch City Holdings, it must be the unanimous decision of the appointments committee.
Yeah, so the panel though is not.
The panel, yes. There's a difference between the appointments committee, which is CCHL, and the appointments panel. Because in the policy, the appointments panel is usually composed of two people. So of course you either have, you either have a split decision or you have a unanimous one. Because it's the mayor and the deputy, it's the committee though is unanimous under the policy.
Okay. Any other question? Marcus?
Thank you. Um, looking at the panel, is there a way for the chairs of the organisations such as VO or, um, CNZ to have consultation into that process?
Panel could decide to ask them, they could ask them for their views, yeah.
Yeah, they just ask them not have them on the panel, just like we were going to do anyway.
Cool, thank you.
Yanni?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, has CCHL's constitution been amended to limit the number of councillor or director appointments to two?
I have no idea. Uh, Bead?
No, the CCHL constitution requires that there's not more than four councillor directors, but the policy specifies two.
The, uh, sorry. The council may pass a resolution in twenty twenty-two that there would be two directors on the CCHL, two councillor directors on the CCHL board.
Right, I'm just, like, I'm just reading the, um, the information in front of us and I don't see that it limits in the policy to two. There might have been a council resolution, but.
It was in a resolution at the end of twenty twenty-two, when the policy was last reviewed.
All right, there's a goal. So this is where we do, so, sorry Katie, do we do the, do the whole lot? So we're, we're, okay, no more question, oh, sorry, debate, anyone want any debate? No, that's good. Okay, so we've got that motion right in front of us, you're right there Katie? Yep, so we liven it up and here it comes. Yep, good scope, far away everybody. I couldn't do it with my fat fingers. Thank you, Bead.
Yeah, a bullying complaint.
Which one? So you done your.
And councillor Donovan.
Yanni, you done yours, babe? Celeste?
Celeste.
Celeste? Right, everyone's got it, that's voting, it's closed, so thank you very much, and here it comes. Excellent, that's brilliant, thank you very much, that's approved, that's passed. Right. Whilst we have Linda here, we'll go on to Local Government Funding Agency Annual Report, please. Welcome again.
Oh no, it was up on the screen.
Okay, far away, please.
Uh, this is the Local Government Funding Agency Annual Report and the annual meeting. Um, the annual meeting is held in Wellington but can be held, uh, but can be attended over, um, the phone. Um, the key issue here is appointing, um, a proxy and an alternate to cast the council's votes, uh, and it's proposed that, um, the head of finance, his title, his actual title is group financial controller is the proxy and that the chair of the meeting is the alternate. Uh, in terms of the issues that are coming up at the AGM for voting on, the key one is a new director, uh, to the board, uh, Paul Anderson is proposed. He was previously the general manager of finance at the council. Uh, he's the chief executive of New Zealand Ski Limited. The details are in the actual report on any further information, uh, about him. Uh, the staff support that, uh, appointment. Christchurch City Council is one of the two councils that are being, um, proposed for reappointment to the shareholders council. The shareholders council is, are the ten, broadly the ten, uh, largest holders of, uh, LGFA, um, equity, many of which also have the highest holdings of debt. Um, and they advise all of the various councils on the LGFA governance issues. Uh, the only other thing I was, or a couple of other things, one is that the council has an eight point three percent shareholding, so, uh, to get to fifty-one percent, to have a majority say on any of the proposals that come up at the AGM, we'd need to be together with at least five other councils who also have the highest shareholding, uh, so it's a very difficult, um, challenge. Uh, in terms of the annual report, um, there is nothing, um, untoward. Uh, I would like to just raise the issue of guarantor risk. That's one of the biggest issues for the council is that we, amongst other councils, uh, guarantee any default in repayments from other councils. Um, it's, debt on issue is something like tw- uh, twenty-two billion. Um, our risk is assessed at about four hundred and eighty-six million. Uh, this takes into account all the other options that the LGFA would have to manage, financially manage any defaults. Um, our assessment is that it is highly, highly unlikely that there, that we would be called on that guarantee.
Okay, oh, good. So questions and then we'll go on to debate if any pick.
Thank you, just, uh, returning to that final issue you talked about as guarantor with, in the event of a default, is the risk any high, is it higher or lower than any previous terms?
It's, it's higher now, as, as debt, as, as lending by the LGFA gets increases, which it does generally every year, so too does the, the risk.
So.
Well, more or less, depending on who, depending on who actually the lending is to.
Bead?
Thank you, and through your worship, just to add what Linda has said, is that I, I think really one of the important aspects to identify how remote it is, is that it, it is not actually listed as a contingent liability in council's financial statement. So the auditors are all over this, it's noted as a contingency, but it's not, it's so remote because, uh, there, if you look at it, there are many layers between us, including that actually councils, all of them have really pretty good credit ratings. So I think the fact that the auditors have assessed it in that way does speak to the fact that the risk is highly, highly remote.
Okay, no more questions or any discussion? Tim?
Yeah, it's an interesting one to keep an eye on, isn't it? Because in the UK, quite a few councils have actually filed for bankruptcy. Birmingham, Birmingham being the single largest council in the UK has, has, um, applied for that. So it's, I think, uh, something that we, whoever it is within LGA that, that are just checking, double checking these organisations, these councils, because that's what Three Waters was meant to do, was to, you know, oh, you can set up a, an, an, an entity and borrow up to five hundred percent, wouldn't that be wonderful? But it's still debt.
They've got rates caps in the UK, so that's part of why they go bankrupt.
Right, yeah, thank you, no more debate. So we have, uh, Aaron, we have a mover and seconder?
But don't, don't, don't all councils have, um, a debt limit? We have a percentage limit, so the risk is kind of dictated by that, isn't it?
Through, through you, your worship, that, that's correct. I mean, two point eight percent of, uh, essentially two, two hundred and eighty percent of revenue is the limit that can be borrowed. And that's an LGFA.
So that's the real safeguard there.
Yeah, that's one of the many, yes, quite correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, well, I'll, I'll, as I say, as a pair of mover and seconder, um, I'll put that motion, or please play with your buttons, I shouldn't say that. Moving right along. Okay. Yeah, Pauline's doing it. Okay, so Roto, that, that is brilliant, that's, um, that's passed, thank you very much. Okay, now Linda's still there, so that's right, but this next one is Christchurch City Holdings AGM. So what we're looking for here is two volunteers that would like to carry on. Linda's going to say something important.
Christchurch New Zealand Holdings AGM.
And that, yep.
Well, not, not CCHL.
No, sorry, that was my mistake, Christchurch NZ Holdings. We're looking for two volunteers that would like to go along if they wanted to, to the AGM. Does anyone, um, uh, we've got Celeste and David, is that, is that right? Yep, any, anyone can go. Anyone, any, anyone can go, but we need two to go along, so, to hold up the vote.
Can I clarify, can, uh.
Question?
Are the councillor directors precluded from doing that?
So, okay, so Sam's happy to move this and, um, Pauline's happy to second it. So any discussion, any questions, anything? No, it's pretty straightforward. So I'll put that motion all those in favour. Oh, yeah, press button. It's good, we're starting to get a hang of it, it's good. Oh, good, thank you, that's closed and look at that, brilliant. There you go, up there. Yep. Okay, now we'll move on to number nine, the council committee structure. Now, just to put you in the picture, this is the, um, there's about twenty of them, is that right, mate? I'm just guessing, of the, for the council committees, so for the, for the.
So there ha- there have been some committees that were carried forward or not disestablished at the election.
Yeah, but this is for the.
This is the ones that you're, the ones that you're appointing.
Oh, sorry, yeah, now I'm with you, yeah. So, does anyone want to talk there or me?
No, this, uh, so just, um, is the author that held the pen for the mayor. This is, uh, just, uh, the mayor's discussed it at a briefing with you the other day. This is, uh, his powers under the legislation. Uh, it's just appearing on the council paper today, so there's an official record of it. But it's not a matter that can be voted today. It's, he's, uh, used his powers under section forty-one A, I think it is, of the Local Government Act and appointed. I should remind you, it's forty-one A or forty-eight, forty-one A, yeah.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions on that? Yanni?
Yeah, so the Te Hoononga Committee is being set up today?
No, no, it's, if, if you read the report and also look at the colour coding on that diagram, it is one of the committees that were not discharged.
Right, okay.
So the three ones, audit and risk, health and safety and Toho Hanga were not discharged at the elections. So the ones that the mayor has established under forty-one A, uh, finance and performance, policy and planning, assurance subcommittee, and the CEO employment and performance committee.
Right, so has the membership of any of those ones that are not discharged changed?
No, they can't, they can't be changed by the mayor. They have to be changed by using, uh, schedule seven of the legislation.
So if someone wants to change going forward, they can?
Yeah.
Right, and is, is there a process to review, like, Te Hoononga, like, in terms of how it's worked in the previous term and have a discussion about it?
There's a review underway at the moment, um, which is led by the treaty team with the chairs, uh, and that will be coming back with some advice to council.
Yeah, and just to be clear, if, if we are concerned or want further discussion on things like terms of reference, we can't do that today.
No, that's.
We have to do a notice of motion.
No, no, as you will note in the report, it does, uh, the mayor does suggest that the, uh, committees could look at the, um, uh, terms of reference. And, um, so I think it's, uh, two point ten proposed terms of reference to all committees and it's expected that the committees will review and identify any required amendments and submit any proposed amendments back to council.
Right, so just, sorry, does that mean the committee would review its terms and then recommend to itself as a, as a committee of the whole? Or it would be another report to the full council, even though the committee is the full council anyway? Right.
Okay, any other questions?
So through the process, it, it's, we get, you know, a year into it or whatever, so we can review. So for instance, the, the, um, rise in concern with the environment, because I noticed that, um, it's a really good thing that, um, it's a committee of the whole that it's, it's under, um, which is, um, Victoria's, um, um, committee of the whole. But climate change resilience and planning, I think is, personally is going to be more of an issue. And so we do have the ability through the chair of that committee to, to review and raise its importance or whatever, as we, rather than getting perhaps the, the fear from the public would be that, oh, look, it's just being jammed in with a whole lot of other things and it could get, it could get lost, because we just, I, I just went to a Fens meeting with regards to the Port Hills. There is a lot of nerve, nervousness and the high risk there is the urban rural connection. As we all know, that is the concern, so I just wanted to raise that here, just so the public know that we are looking at, we are aware of it.
Just to be clear, there's three options there, one is that committee could form a subcommittee focused on this. So that, um, uh, secondly is the mayor could establish it, you know, if asked to another committee.
Let's turn, put life into another one.
And thirdly, it could be established under schedule seven of the legislation.
As you, as you say, if it's sort of, people feel that it's hidden round the corner and behind the closet, it doesn't, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted to reassure them, because I'm, obviously it's not, but we need to voice that.
Yep, okay. Celeste?
Um, just in regards to that question, so with the climate change working group, where does that, how does that sort of fit within this broader scope? Because it's almost like a little bit overlapping to have this under that and then also a separate group.
So that group, that group doesn't exist at the moment, it wasn't one, it was discharged at the election. Um, so if that, if the committee, if that's reformed just exactly in the same process that I described to Tim, either, uh, the committee decided to reform it as a subgroup, uh, the mayor may subsequently, if a good case was put up, decide to form, reform that working group. Or thirdly, it could be established by the council under, um, the schedule seven. And we would, could provide you with some advice about that.
And is it something we'd look to do today? Because my concern would be that that's not clarified currently Because I, I was of the understanding that, that working group, which has been quite successful, and I think those on it would agree, would then sort of lose its ability to really work quite in a targeted way on that issue. And it's quite a broad focus here, we're covering quite a lot.
So this was debated, a paper came up, it was debated and voted on in September by the council about which committees were retained and which were discharged. So that decision has, has been made. You can't make that decision today because you would need some advice. And this isn't a report, this is a report just informing people that the mayor has exercised his powers. To actually form a committee, you'd need some advice about what the terms of reference would be, what the capacity, what the framework that work, and what the capacity of the organisation to support that would be, and if there'd be any additional costs. But it can come at subsequent, this can't be done today unless you're questioned.
Tom, Tyler?
Mary, we were talking about the youth and multicultural committees in our briefing last time. Would this be the time to raise, or ask for staff advice in regards to the future of some kind of advocacy or working group with those groups?
That's the same advice that I've just given to Celeste about the working group, so the same.
So just do it, just do it offline? Okay.
Yanni?
Sorry, just, the membership of audit and risk and health and, sorry, and insurance are, are different. So is that?
The membership hasn't been altered from the decision you made in September last year to carry on that committee as it was. So if you want to change the membership, that can come back to a subsequent meeting, either via a notice of motion from the councillors under Schedule seven, or it can be done when we review those committees.
So, okay, so the, so the ones in the green, the membership has not changed?
No.
And the new ones that are proposed, like the insurance?
Not proposed, they're formed, the mayor's formed them under his powers.
Okay, thanks.
Ty, Ryan, did you, were you looking like putting your hand up?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm just, just a question for you, Mr. Mayor, that, whether or not my concerns about being on too many committees were referred, were referred to you from, from the staff member that I talked to yesterday, no, possibly not. Because I'm just saying, I'm just thinking according to this report, so there's an additional committee, but I'm also on audit and risk, and that's carried forward from, from last term. But I indicated my, my desire to, to potentially, yeah.
Can I, can I just clarify, that committee is just replacing one of the council meetings? So it's not an additional workload at all, you would either.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough, yeah, no, so.
We'll all be here anyway, it's not anything more.
Well, then it's probably just, just down to, to my membership of the audit and risk committee, as to, as to whether or not, I mean, that's obviously continuing. But, yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate to have this conversation here.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can talk about, yeah. Okay, so I will, I have to move, do this, don't we?
No, no, it's just noted.
I'm looking at this.
No voting.
Right, so. It's a surprise to me, no, sorry. Okay, so now we go into, I've already done that, Mary, up there, haven't I? Go down to this, Mary. Yeah, so now we have a resolution to exclude, exclude the public as set out in pages one two six, one two seven in the open agenda. I'm happy to move it, and Victoria's happy to second it. There we go, oh, everyone, you get all those in favour? All right, right, thank you, that's carried, we're in PX, gives five minutes.